Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for being here this afternoon. We'll go ahead and get this special board meeting, emergency meeting, the Mission CISD full work started. It is Tuesday, March 17, 2020. It is 12:01 PM. We'll go ahead and get this meeting started. We'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas Act. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
We'll pause for a moment of silence and remember why we're here in this emergency meeting and any other intentions we may have. Thank you very much. Okay, President today is Mr. Teddy Mendosa and Mr. Patty O'Neal Olivares, Mr. Jerry Zamora, myself, Mr. Mini Rogers, and Mr. Pedro Ramirez. We do have forum. Dr. Perez, was this meeting properly posted?
Yes, sir. The notice was posted by 10:00 PM on March 16, 2020.
Okay, you may proceed with item number three.
Item number three comes from the public. Miss Gallo? Okay, Miss Gallo, public comments on specific agenda items?
None.
Okay. The next item, discussion and possible action.
Before we move on this action, I'd like to welcome Mr. Zamora. He has heard from us.
I would just like to thank our superintendent, the board of directors, for working tirelessly on this since Friday. We really appreciate what you've been doing, making sure that our kids and our staff will be safe throughout this whole order.
I'll go ahead and open it up for any other comments individually from the board members who'd like to make.
Well, I want to thank Dr. Perez and all our administrators, our central office staff, for keeping us posted and for taking the action that you needed to take. We stand by you, like always, Dr. Perez. I appreciate it. And we just keep prayers for all these families that may be affected with this pandemic virus. But it's all going to turn out okay. We're going to be good.
Just to reiterate what my colleagues have said, I want to thank you, Dr. Perez, and of course, your administration. People think that you take a district job so that you can have off in spring break and summers, and they have worked tirelessly alonghand with our neighboring cities. I just, we just can't believe, my colleagues and I, how amazing we have all worked together with the school district and our neighboring cities, how all the city councils and the mayors have stepped up to make sure that we provide a safe community. And also, I do want to thank you, Dr. Perez, for the foresight in going ahead and paying our employees early, up to a week early even, our hourly employees, so that they can be prepared and get their families prepared for unfortunately what is happening out there. Many people, it's easy to criticize when you don't have all the information or know what it is that we know, but just know that we all stand behind the plan that our district decided to do. We were very well informed, like Ms. Mendosa said, from step one, and the fact that they worked tirelessly late at night. Dr. Perez was even texting us at 4:00 in the morning to keep us up to speed, and that's what a lot of the community doesn't see, the hard work that everyone has been doing behind the scenes to ensure that our children don't skip a beat with their education and don't skip a beat with their health and safety. So it's a time for us to come together and to help each other, not to find fault in anything that we do, because there is no guidelines for this. This is something that is going to every community, and so I think that as long as we support each other and we can make it through, there will be an end in sight. Like Ms. Mendosa said, everything will turn out all right, but if we all do our part, I think we can minimize it to the least detrimental situation that we can have.
There's nothing that they haven't said that I wouldn't repeat. So thank you, everyone. It's been a wonderful teamwork, which is not surprising.
I do, I want to say thank you to Dr. Perez and to the staff and everybody that has been involved. Like everybody else said, they've worked, I mean, since day one, and I don't think they've left stone unturned to provide what we need for our district and to come up with a plan. And we will carry it out, and we give her our support. The board has been phenomenal too, and keeping in touch, and we've all been on the same wavelength with Dr. Perez, as we've been informed. And we just want to make sure that everybody's aware that our kids will be safe and everybody in the district and in our community will be safe, and we're taking all the precautions and we're going by the state, following TA, everybody, Tasby, the governor, the president, and we are going to be fine, and our kids will get what they need, because that is the most important thing, that we provide our families and our workers and everybody that's with us, you know, that we have a safe plan. We had, the information might not have been out there the way people expect it to be, but we knew where we were. We didn't want to make premature decisions until everything was done and set every day, because you know that day by day, minute by minute, everything is changing. But these people have been out there late and working hard, and we will continue to work hard to provide. And this plan that we're going to roll out today, and everybody, you know, like our board members here say, you know, we need to stick together, we, you know, we need to pray. I think that's the most important thing, that this should be over and if, like, we keep on working together, because we are one big family. We are in the school district and the community, the Mission, the City of Mission. So we will keep on working, day and night, and they have to, and I know they will, and we will too. So just keep us in your prayers, keep the whole community in your prayers, and thank you, Dr. Perez, and board, and all of us for, you know, for all of us being in the same wavelength and supporting our district.
Thank you very much. And I'll go ahead and speak on behalf of Dr. Torino. She couldn't make it this afternoon because she is out of town, but she, I did just break with her, and just for the record, she sends her sentiment. She shares her support in the admin and in Dr. Perez as well. And that's not for me to be left out. I will say a few words, and I want to just reiterate that we are unanimous as a board in our support for the admin and the hard work that you guys are putting. We do see it, and we do appreciate it, the efforts that you're making for our kids and for our children and for Dr. Perez and the efforts that she's making. We are, as a board, as you can see, in full support of you guys and what you're doing with the district board. We do appreciate it. Dr. Perez, would you let us know why you're here?
Well, the reason we're here is because we did call an emergency meeting as of yesterday. One of the things that we talked during the town hall forum with the three city mayors and city managers, we also had interviews with the media, and we said, worst-case scenario, these are our plans. And as of last night, we did get confirmation of a case of COVID-19 in Laredo, and Laredo is Region 1. Region 1 is from Bronzeville to Laredo. And since the very beginning, since a week ago, we've been having daily conference calls with the Commissioner of Education, and that has included Saturday and Sundays. We've also had conference calls with our Education Service Center, where all superintendents have participated. And since the very beginning, as the virus was spreading, it started to spread in the United States, what we were provided with and the recommendation from the Commissioner of the Texas Education Agency was that we follow the Center for Disease Control guidance for considerations for school closure, where they provide step by step, and they talk about how short to medium closures do not make a big impact. It's longer closures of schools that make a larger impact. So the Commissioner kept telling us, do not close your schools prematurely, because those that do, and you have not had widespread or confirmed cases, you will have to reopen. So we took that very seriously, and if you all keep, okay, if somebody could turn off the light real quick. This is the decision tree that the Center for Disease Control has provided to us, and if you look at the top heading, school decision tree, all schools regarding the community spread. If you look at the yellow inverted triangle, it stops, the yellow inverted triangle, confirmed person with COVID-19 in the building or in the community. You assess the risk, and then you close for two to five days. If there's no community spread, then you prepare, you reinforce, you share materials, you start gathering, you start planning and doing all of that. So we knew, once it started to hit Texas, we started on this plan. So then, once it's confirmed, minimal to moderate. Right now, we don't have minimal to moderate, but we're not going to wait. We knew the minute we got confirmation that we at least had one case and other cases being tested, that was the time that we needed to move to the right of the inverted triangle, which is the guidance that we've been provided. It's very easy to develop our own plans, but this plan is research-based. This is the plan that the Center for Disease Control developed after what happened in the other countries, and they saw tremendous success. So also, they give us a timeline. If you only close for one week, what are the implications? The factors that favor, the factors that are against, further considerations? If you close for short-term, two weeks? If you close for four? If you close for eight weeks? And in order to stop the spread of the virus, we have to assess that spread. So we've been keeping in contact on a daily basis with our Hidalgo County Health Department with Mr. Olivares. And let me tell you, he's awesome. He answers my calls and answers my texts, even on Sunday or Saturday. You know, even today, we contacted him. So that is the guidance from TA and the Center for Disease Control. Why are we going to be making a plan that's not scientifically based and fuel-based and evidence-based when the experts have put it in place? So that is what we have committed and Mission CISD to use research-based practices, and that is the plan that we've been following. And these plans have been on our district website. We have sent letters to parents describing, you know, good hygiene practices and so forth, and the minute that I got the call, we, and we have the letters ready for our gates and so forth, even before we left for spring break. So we were ready to post it, and by the time our community woke up, they found out the news that we are closed. Yet we didn't put a timeline, like, we don't, we can't. Why? The research tells us we need to assess the widespread. So what we instead put in our letter, our message to our stakeholders is, until further notice, until we know that everything is well, then we will return and have those gatherings of 50 or more people. So we will be keeping our community informed every step of the way. There will be, an email was sent to all of our staff very early this morning, press releases very early this morning, and also in consultation with those knowledgeable others and our school board and our stakeholders. So moving forward, know that we're not going to come back until it's completely safe to come back, and it will be based on evidence. But we are ready to instruct our children, before the curriculum instruction staff left for the break, they develop lessons for grade-level spans, for the essential Texas essential knowledge and skills curriculum that the state provides, and it is the foundational objectives for children to master. We're not sending anything new. We don't want that burden to our parents. It's teaching for mastery. That's what it's about. So lessons will be distributed. We will have child nutrition meals distributed as well. So additional details will be forthcoming. And as I, you know, we've been meeting every day, even this morning, and we will continue to do so. Why? Because we're here to serve. One of our goals is a service delivery model. We must meet the basic needs of our children, which is shelter, food, so that they can continue to learn. The same thing for our staff. So today, I am going to be also asking the school board for additional allowances, and I think the staff will be very, very pleased. And, you know, like I said, total team effort. You know, our payroll finance, student support services, you know, we were able to provide those early paychecks from March 25th to the 17th. Why? Because we wanted our staff to make sure they were able to provide for themselves and their families. The same thing with our hourly wage people. They're also getting, they got a check on Friday, they're going to get another check the following week. We want to make sure that our families are well taken care of, because our employees are the backbone of our school district. So we've got to give credit where credit is due. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 51. But we're going to pull it for...
For discussion in executive session?
For some legal questions that need to be answered in the legal session. So we're going to go ahead and head into executive session for private consultation with Board Attorney for Texas Government Close Section 551.071. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the board may enter into a closed meeting to deliberate any item that listed above that fits within exception, listed in chapter 2. Any final action, decision, or vote on a subject deliberated in a closed meeting will be taken into an open meeting held in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. It is 12:19 PM. We're now in executive session. Just an FYI, we'll be back as soon as possible to a closed meeting and make a decision. All right, welcome. Welcome back. Right, it's 12:58 PM. We're now back to the executive session. Mrs. Zamora, you want to...
I know that we have the cities that we service as far as our school district mission is here. I'd like to thank Paul Hurst being here and Alton being here. It's very important that we do work together, and I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Dr. Perez?
Yes. We are looking at consideration and approval of resolution of the Mission Consolidated Independent District authorizing administrative response to COVID-19 emergency, and we have a resolution. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Garcia?
Actually, I believe there is a meeting...
No, go ahead and read the background information, and then you'll make the resolution.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Perez. The superintendent of schools is currently authorized by Board Policy DEA Local to order an emergency closure of schools. And additionally, Board Policy DEA Local states that if the board chooses to pay employees during an emergency closure for which the workdays are not scheduled to be made up on a later date, that the authorization shall be by resolution or other board action that would reflect such purposes of the expenditure. Now, on March 31st, the governor of the state of Texas did declare a state of disaster for all counties in Texas as COVID, March 13th, as COVID-19 poses an imminent threat. On the same day, the United States President also issued a proclamation that COVID-19 outbreak in the United States constitutes a national emergency beginning March 1st, 2020. The federal government, along with the state and local governments, have taken preventive and collective measures to slow the spread of the virus and treat those affected. In an effort to ensure students and staff's safety and minimize any possible risks that may materialize during the upcoming days for a possible outbreak, the superintendent may exercise her authority to close all district operations. For employees that may be prevented from working their regularly scheduled workday because of this closure, it is the district's intent not to make up the workday that was lost due to the closure. It is the district's intent also to pay staff for their regularly scheduled, in accordance with Board Policy DEA Local. All of these expenditures have been budgeted for. In addition to that, the resolution also addresses employees, hourly employees that do have to work during the closing, that they also be compensated at time and a half. These expenditures may also qualify for reimbursement from the federal government, so we are tracking such expenditures. At this time, we are recommending a perol of the resolution of the Mission Consolidated Independent School District authorizing administrative response to COVID-19 emergency.
Now, go ahead and read the resolution aloud, and then move to the next. Resolution of the Mission Consolidated Independent School District authorizing administrative response to COVID-19 emergency. Whereas, the Mission Consolidated Independent School District, quote, "district," and quote, seeks to maintain a core dedicated and caring employees, and whereas, the district wishes to provide the greatest amount of stability for students and staff while continuing to ensuring their safety. And whereas, Texas Education Code Section 25.081 authorizes the Commissioner of Education to approve requests for variance in total instructional minutes if the district is closed for disaster, flood, extreme weather conditions, fuel curtailment, or another calamity, thousands of, closing of schools. And whereas, TDC Section 48.005 authorizes the Commissioner of Education to adjust the average daily attendance of a district if the district is closed for disaster, flood, extreme weather condition, fuel curtailment, or other calamity that has significant effect on the district's attendancy. And whereas, the Commissioner of Education has stated that TDC Section 21.401(c) represents a legislative determination that a public purpose exists to continue educators' salaries during times of emergencies. And whereas, the Commissioner of Education has stated that he will approve requests for variance in total contract days if districts make such a request in commensurate with the date, number of days a district is closed for emergencies. And whereas, all district employees, contractual and at-will, contribute to the achievement of the educational mission of Mission CISD. And whereas, paying at-will employees for emergency school closure days will enhance morale, reduce employee turnover, and reduce district exposure to unemployment claims. Whereas, paying at-will employees to work during the COVID-19 emergency at premium rate will encourage at-will employees to volunteer for critical duty during such emergencies. Whereas, a rapidly changing environment may require the purchase of goods and services necessary to ensure the health and well-being of students, staff, and members of the community. Now, therefore, be it resolved, number one, that the Board of Trustees authorizes the superintendent without further action of the Board of Trustees to petition state and local authorities for a waiver of laws and regulations as necessary to respond to the COVID-19 emergency. Number two, that the Board of Trustees authorizes the superintendent to seek any necessary waivers from the Texas Education Agency without further action of the Board of Trustees regarding missed instructional days, low attendance, or any matters related to the emergency closures as part of this resolution. Number three, that at-will employees who were not, as of the date of this resolution, on unpaid leave, be paid at their prevailing daily wage and receive their usual benefits in the event schools close for the COVID-19 emergency. Number four, that the Board of Trustees authorizes the superintendent to act in the place of the board under Board Policy DEA Local and thus make all decisions regarding payment of employees during an emergency closure to implement the provisions of Board Policy DEA Local and to make determinations regarding the purpose and parameters of any such payments. Number five, that the Board of Trustees authorizes the superintendent to act in the place of the board under Board Policy DEC Local and thus make all decisions regarding the use and extension of paid and unpaid leave during an emergency closure to implement the provisions of Board Policy DEC Local and to make determinations regarding the purpose and parameters of any such grant of leave. Number six, that the Board of Trustees authorizes the superintendent to create guidelines and make determinations regarding absences, leave time, leave dates, and compensation of any employees who is quarantined as a result of COVID-19 and/or who test positive for COVID-19 and who presents appropriate medical documentation regarding themselves and/or an immediate family member, and the sole discretion of the superintendent or designees in compliance with Texas and federal law. Number seven, that the Board of Trustees authorizes the superintendent to pay at-will employees who were required to work on days when schools were closed for the COVID-19 emergency to be paid time and a half. Number eight, the Board of Trustees authorizes the superintendent to alter the Mission CISD 2019, 2020 school calendar by changing and/or adding school instructional hours and work school days as necessitated by any emergency closure-related concerns. Number nine, that the Board of Trustees delegates to the superintendent to solicit and procure goods and services on the board's behalf to the fullest extent permitted under Texas Education Code Section 44.0312, subject to the monetary limitations stated in this resolution. Number 10, that the Board of Trustees delegates to the superintendent the authority to make all budgeted purchases as the budget may be amended by the Board of Trustees and the limitation imposed by Board Policy CH Local is increased to $250,000 per contract. Number 11, that the Board of Trustees delegates to the superintendent the authority to declare a force majeure and to enforce and take all appropriate actions permitted upon the declaration of a force majeure in the best interest of the district. And number 12, that the authority granted herein shall commence on the date superintendent lawfully orders the closure of one or more campuses, and it shall terminate on the earlier of the date on which all campuses are reopened on June 30th, 2020. Okay, we got a motion on the floor with Patty O'Neal Olivares, seconded by Mr. Jerry Zamora. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. All right, thank you, Dr. Perez. Any other items?
Just a few updates. We know that the Center for Disease Control recommends that we use evidence that comes from our county health department in order to reopen schools. That is the reason why our letter stated until further notice. So we will be utilizing the recommendation from our county health department to let us know when it is safe to return to work. Now, for some housekeeping items, we will be meeting with campus principals this afternoon, and also, we will be posting information, periodic information on our webpages, on social media, and emails to staff, and even to the media. Number one would be meals, how meals will be distributed for breakfast and lunch and locations, schools will be clustered. Also, at that specific point, we would like parents to pick up the instructional packets for their children, so that we can minimize exposure going from one location to another to pick up instructional materials. Also, if... Uh, also, if for some reason, uh, parents choose to feed their children at home, then they, uh, we will have a mechanism in place where they will be able to notify their teachers through the, their class dojo or simply call us or the campus. And we'll provide detailed steps on that so that they can have access to the packets. If parents are able to pick them up, they will be picked up. If we need to deliver them to their home, we will do that. Uh, also, we will be asking for additional volunteers because at this point, we have lessons for three weeks. We may need, uh, additional lessons for specific courses. So we will be asking some of our staff members, especially classroom teachers, for volunteers and those individuals will get paid additionally for curriculum writing. Uh, also, our child nutrition program maintenance and operation, as the resolution stated, they will also be paid for the work that they do. So the individuals that are coming in, they are gonna be coming in on a voluntary, voluntary basis. If we do not have enough volunteers in one department, we'll open it up to other departments and so forth. But we know that our staff is about customer service and serving one another. Uh, our staff have a big heart and we know that they will answer the call. So we will continuously provide very specific information. And then again, we're only a phone call away and email away. And, uh, we will be providing answers. We will be providing direction as information continues to evolve. Thank you.
Any other comments?
The only thing I would say is just please be patient. Please be patient with, uh, with our district. What, I mean, we're all trying to figure it out. They're trying to figure it out. This is an initial plan. I know it may sound like it's very broad to some, to some of you, but they are working on the logistics and the details and just, uh, we've all agreed, just, it'll be rolled out as we have it. Um, we wanna do what's best for the kids and we wanna make sure they continue with their education. We wanna do what's best for the staff or our administration. Everyone is important to us, all the employees. They're all important to us and, and, and we will come out of this successful and we have no doubt that our kids are still gonna shine, they're still gonna do excellent, um, on, on their schoolwork and, I mean, we're, we've, we're a Mission C I S D community. And in community, it's unity. So we have to stick together, guys. We have to stick together and we have to help each other and build each other up and be there for, for one another and for, and for the kids and, and to support staff, administration, and the superintendent and our teachers that come in and volunteer. We're gonna, we're gonna work it out, but all I can say is just be patient, please. It's not gonna do anybody any good to be bashing each other on social media or bashing us or bashing the superintendent or bashing anyone, you know, we're, we're here to listen and I think we've all done a good job about doing that. So patience is all I'm, I'm gonna end, end it with.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Got a motion on the floor, from Dr. Perez Mendosa, seconded by, uh, Ms. President O'Neal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries six, zero. We are now adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for joining us.